Your attention, we'll call our meeting to order. It's good to see all of you this evening on a brand-new month. February the first, 2021 is flying by. I do want to remind everyone that tonight's meeting is a workshop meeting, so therefore we'll be discussing these items on our agenda. And we do have agendas at the podium if you'd like to grab one and follow along. But we won't actually be voting on them tonight. That will happen at our regular meeting, which will happen on President's Day. So let's see, Rob, I'm going to turn everything over to you because we do have to, we have two public hearings to take care of first.
All right, at this time, I want to call for a public hearing on application number PP20-0059. This application is paid by Tipton Apartments, LLC, to resell 485 acres from general business to multi-residential. This property is located just to the west of the current Mill Ridge subdivision. At this time, I'll ask that everybody constantly have conflicts. Has, have any of these applicants or opponents of the application contributed at least $250 to any of the campaigns or less than that?
Two years.
No.
No, no.
Do you or any members of your family have a property interest that would be affected by the proposed rezoning reclassification, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
No.
Do you or any members of your family have a financial interest in any business entity that has a property interest in any real property that would be affected by the proposed rezoning reclassification of the property, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
No.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask, Crystal, can you come on up and give us a little bit of information about this proposed rezoning application?
Mayor and Council, on January 11th, 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted on the application that Rob just brought to your attention. The rezone is for 80 and 82 Oak Point Avenue. The owner requests a rezone to continue the development of two family dwellings that exist and are under development to the west of the Mill Ridge subdivision. The property is currently zoned general business to be zoned multi-residential for a two-family dwelling. Do you have any questions or need any further information?
I think you only have a little bit of this flat.
Just really just to the west, just adding, extending it a little bit further to the west as far as this multi-residential.
And that's what the other one, other, it's also multi-residential next to it.
That's right.
That's right.
Just go a little bit further west with it.
Okay.
Let me ask you, what did we zone that for, general business? Didn't we zone that general, I mean, it's been, what? Didn't we take it from multi-residential to general business?
I don't know that question, I don't, I don't know that.
I think so.
We'll check into that. I remember I was doing something for this parcel. Turned something from, that was multi-residential into general business. And maybe it's not one of these parcels. Maybe in a corner lot for an office or something like that, was that?
You're right, and that was some time back. I can't remember exactly what it was that we did.
But that's not a part of this stretch of property right here.
I think it was, I think it was a planned development overlay seven years ago.
It is, it's to the east of it, that's right.
And I think their, their initial plan way back years ago, maybe even with previous owner, was to, to come in and do maybe some type of commercial development on that corner. So that's why we did that, if I remember enough.
I think that's ringing a bell.
Yeah.
What was you going to say, Jessica?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, I'm sorry, Jessica.
All right, all right. All right. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this application? Is anyone here that'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Mayor and Council, there not being any public comment, I ask that public hearing be closed.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have one other public hearing. This is on application number PP20-0058. This is an application that's being brought by the City of Tipton to, for a test amendment to section 5.02.08 of the Land Development Code related to mobile food units. Mayor and Council, this has not involved rezones, so I'll skip the conflict questions. So this time, again, I'll ask, so you should get up and give us an idea of what this test amendment is all about.
Thank you. On January 11th, 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the, changing the City of Tipton's Land Development Code, the Mobile Food Unit Ordinance, to remove the 15 parking space requirement in the commercial downtown area and the 100-foot distance requirement from brick-and-mortar restaurants. Those are the two changes that are proposed.
I want to ask about, about the 100 feet, did we say 100 feet? So what happens with the food truck park and the restaurant that's sitting next door to the food truck park?
Yes, and that's one of the things that's prompted us to take a broader look at this ordinance. So in the commercial downtown area, we do not feel that the food truck court or any mobile food unit will have a negative impact on bricks-and-mortar restaurants. So that is one of the reasons why, why we're looking at this.
Yeah, here's your question.
I guess, why, why would we think that? I mean, why, I mean, does, competition brings competition? Is that what the thought is, or, I guess?
That's currently what the ordinance says now. It's going to require that a food truck can't be within 100 feet of a brick-and-mortar restaurant. And whoever developed, come up with those standards back in, I believe, 2013 or '14, that was their decision. I think it was just to secure, it's, it's not as costly, you know, to have a, a food truck as it is to have a, a restaurant. It was just out of respect for the restaurant owners that are, you know, have that increased expense of, of having a permanent location.
Well, yeah, I guess the question is, do you want a permanent location or do you want some food trucks? I don't know the answer to that, but that's what, you know.
Well, no, I've had the, I've had the opportunity to have several conversations with Abby McLaren, our downtown development director and executive director for the Downtown Development Authority. And it seems that more communities are moving towards food trucks. They tend to, they, and they tend to work well with bricks and mortar. I think when the initial ordinance was created all those years ago, the, the concern was that they would have an unfair advantage over bricks and mortar. But with, especially going through COVID, I think we're finding that they can work very well together because so many of the bricks and mortar have gone to a take-on-only type setting or outdoor dining and that kind of thing. So I don't know if Abby might be willing to kind of share some information on some of the research she's done. I know that some of that, I know you shared with Planning and Zoning Group, but, but that might, that might, she might be able to shed some light on that for you, Jessica.
Sure, in actuality, we have, for instance, the empty and available podcast building that's right next to the municipal food truck site there that District 125 Commerce. Actually, that building is now under contract for a restaurant to become a brick-and-mortar restaurant for a food truck down here recently. So, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, you know. But what we find is that the benefit of the food trucks and what they bring and some of these other brick-and-mortar locations here have opportunities to participate in this outdoor mobile food site. So that's part of what we're asking to remove that 100 feet from the restaurant so that everyone can do that.
And I'm not, I've always been a proponent of food trucks, you know, from, from the beginning. But I just don't want to do those, you know, at the expense of brick-and-mortar restaurants. And I guess another thing is, so there's going to be enough parking? I get, I mean, I realize about...
That was the only stipulation that the group, when we talked about this. The food court area being downtown, obviously, there isn't enough parking. So we obviously discovered that right across the street there is public parking. So the 100-foot, the parking, the food court, and really, it's transformation, transformation of downtown and the way the eateries are happening, the businesses that are coming. So we took into account, we have ample amount of parking for, to hold the food court in, in the close proximity. So that was the other area that was very, very closely studied to make sure that we could support it publicly.
And hopefully, through Abby's work and her department and everything, here you've got an example of a food truck that came to participate in a special event, saw the, you know, the opportunities available in downtown Tipton and decided to, to, well, they're still having food truck, decided to also have a bricks-and-mortar location. So that potential is there, you know, with, as we bring different, different groups in with the food truck, maybe from other locations, to see that the, the environment's very rich here for, you know, potential bricks and mortar, and if they can do favors, so.
Now, this is only allowed in commercial downtown?
That's right.
Is this the change, or is, just be, just before commercial downtown zone?
Okay.
All right, this time I ask for a public input. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this application? Is anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this application? There being no further input, I would ask that this public hearing be closed.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, we will call, we did call the meeting to order, but now we'll move on with the approval of the agenda. Jessica has sent that out to us and noticed the public in the appropriate manner as far as the agenda. I would only ask that we have one small change. Has Ricky Harvey made it in yet? I know Ricky's, the first item under new business, so we still want to hear from Ricky, but we'll just move him down further into the, to the agenda, so.
I finally gave him an opportunity to go first.
And he's not here?
And he's not here!
He'll never want to go first to him.
Oh, wow, that's it, he lost that right. But anyway, you've got the agenda, so I'll take an approval, or motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
All right, is there a second? Thank you. So we have motion, second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that is the only item that we'll be voting on. All right, so we'll move Ricky's number-one new business to later in the agenda. The next item is considering a request for the Affordable Equity Partners, Inc. for support of the 2021 low-income housing tax credit. So Jessica and Crystal, do you want to present that?
Mayor, AEP, y'all may be familiar with that development partner. Their representative is Mandy Young. She's, came here before and requested support of the city. And this year, they're requesting the city's support for the 2021 LITC application for developing a senior housing apartment complex off of E.B. Hamilton Road. And the, the plan currently is to develop a complex for 44 one- and two-bedroom apartments. Plan has been submitted to you all. And staff has reviewed this. We provided it to GIC, and GIC is recommending it. And we are recommending it contingent upon them annexing into the city, so.
Okay. All right, so do you want to have the, the plan there in our packet? Does anyone have any questions, Jessica or Crystal?
Is, is that all that, I guess, we've got that other piece that they're right next to, and that's in the city. Does anything else in the city from there out to E.B. Hamilton?
No, only one of those developments is actually in the city. The first development is in the city, the second, I think that's right. Anybody else want to confirm?
There's a lot of gaps right there, so.
Yeah. There's a, a multifamily and a senior development, and one of them is in and one of them is out.
Okay.
I'm talking about where the, they both have the same interest, so one goes around the back, is that what, those two developments out there?
It's, this would be duplicate of, of that, that's right.
Okay, so it's going to, but it'd be almost city.
Well, that's one of the things that contingency to say, if, if you decide to support it, then we, we told them that they'd have to annex into the city.
Should they annex before we give our support letter?
Well, the application wouldn't, wouldn't call for that, so, and we don't really know even if they're going to be approved. So upon approval, that's, that would be their first order of business.
So what if they don't?
Well, do you want me to be honest? Okay. We were approved, the City of Tipton was approved for a LITC application for the Old Omega Road property. So in order for them to get the point on their application, they can't be within the city this year. They won't get any, it won't, our support letter will not offer them any benefit. So, you know, now they're going to submit their application as being in this county, and then if it's approved, you know, they'll move forward with annexation before they start their construction.
For the Old Omega project?
Sir?
You said for the Old Omega project?
No.
For this, so they don't need our letter for, directly, right? Is that what you're saying?
They do to get one point.
Oh, I see, okay.
And it's actually, I mean, every little point adds up.
Every point, okay.
So if we, if you do the support letter, they get one point for their application. If we do that, and they get funded, then the first order of business is they, they annex into the city. And I asked Jessica to talk to Mandy and make sure that, that is in writing, that ADP understands that. ADP, excuse me.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, all right, thank you, Jessica. All right, I see the infamous Mr. Ricky Harvey has entered the room. So Ricky, we're going to back up and ask you to talk to us about the surplus 1998 Caterpillar dirt pan.
You get to go first, I'll just tell them, you get to go first instead of last.
And I missed, and then I missed them. I'll pretend to.
We'll tell you before Ricky starts, Ricky is, he's been in class, this is his second week, and he's getting recertified as a landfill operator. So very extensive coursework, and it's a lot to him. So he's, he's almost done, and I'm sure he'll be another graduate, so.
That's fine.
Well, I want to present to y'all, just what you read there is, we have a 1998 615-seater dirt pan Caterpillar brand. We've had some interest in purchasing it, but before anything can happen, we need y'all to surplus it for that to happen. And it's well beyond its years of use at our place.
Is that county still interested, the county that was interested?
Yeah, it was, I believe Cook County was interested in the machines, and Caterpillar was interested in taking it and rebuilding it for them.
Okay, all right. Pretty straightforward and standard stuff.
Yeah.
Any questions, do you want to have any questions of Ricky? All right, all right, thank you, Ricky. All right, the next item on our agenda involves a couple of resolutions. Jessica, do you want to go ahead and address both of those? The first one is the enterprise zone incentive for the Falls property, a property located at 331 Commerce Place.
Yes, the owner of this property is planning to convert the 7,500-square-foot space into six apartments, and their plan is for them to be two bedrooms, two baths. And based on the information supplied by Mr. Falls, the rehab investment is estimated at $400,000. Based on the investment amount, Mr. Falls, is his name Falls?
Falls.
Meets the criteria of the five-to-one to be eligible for the enterprise zone. And staff has reviewed this and has recommended approval. The incentive package that was prepared is totaled at $12,076.
Okay.
Y'all have any questions? Most of the information is in there, everything that he submitted. And if you need anything else, just let me know before the council meeting.
Okay, all right, and that full packet is in our packet. Any questions?
The packet is here.
If y'all have any, she's more familiar with the, the client and the development, if y'all have any specific questions.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just curious, and, and not that, not because our county chairman's sitting back there, but I know it's always been the city-only tax abatements have, does a, an owner of this have the ability to go to the county to ask for a county tax abatement, or what's the?
The county would have to participate. The county has, in the past, chosen not to, but the county certainly could if the county, you know, it just be through a resolution and they agree enterprise zone opportunities, same just like we do, or have, just like we have.
I mean, and I'm not, but it, I mean, taxes help, you know.
Right.
We all get lots of taxes, I say we get lots. But, I mean, county, city get taxes, I didn't know if that was.
Well, and what happens is, as, and this is sort of, I've always looked at this as kind of an ante into the pot. When you offer incentives for good development, it helps build that tax base over time. So if the incentive, if you, you know, if you kind of throw that incentive out there up front with sustainable development, that, and, and there's, you know, there's steps that they have to go through before that, you know, this can be approved. And so if they meet that criteria, meet that threshold, then our tax base improves. And if the tax base improves over time, then our county partners and our school partners benefit from that. So, so it's building the tax base in a way that's, that helps the developer to take that risk up front, and then the governments get to give the recipient, you know, that we're the recipient of those tax offers and things.
Got you, okay, I'm good.
All right, any other questions on the Falls property enterprise zone? Everybody good? All right, Jessica, you want to talk about Save-A-Lot? I think that's pretty straightforward as well.
Yeah, this is a change in ownership for the Save-A-Lot location on Virginia Avenue, and staff has reviewed the information on the owner and the manager, and is recommending approval.
Okay, all right, any questions on that? All right, thank you. All right, Chief Bobby Bennett, you want to talk to us about the proposed amendment for emergency services?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Oh, you know, we went over, you know, a week or so ago and talked about the problems that we were having. Since then, myself and Pete and Rob and Jessica added some things to it also of, of a way that we can, we hope stop what's going on. So after three, after the fourth one, it's going to be a $250 fine. After that, it's $1,000. So there's no, there's no misunderstanding what the problem is with what we're doing. So we feel like that's fair. I hope we don't never have to write a citation for this. It's not what this is about. This is about people fixing their alarm systems. That's, that's what's important right now, so.
And again, as a recap, we had over 88, we're focused in on false alarms, false alarms that come in at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning. Obviously, we have to pay eight hours of time. So if we make a run out of the fire department, that's $1,300 for starters. So just, again, this is, this is the incentive to say, please help us fix your alarms. We, and my chief said, we don't want to do this for anything but.
But I guess, I mean, the problem for me is this, this is a cost to the taxpayer. Okay? And, and if you're causing cost to the taxpayer, then you pay for that cost. Because the rest of us don't want to pay you not fixing your fire alarm. I don't, I mean, to me, once, once, and you don't go fix it, then you get twice, and you don't get fix it. I'm assuming this is for the same, is it for the same thing? Or could it be three of any reasons for the, before the fine goes into effect? Is it?
It's up to the alarm administrator, which would be me. So depending on when we get there, why was it a false alarm? Did somebody pull a pool station? If a kid pulled a pool station or something like that, then that's, that's understandable. You know, you can't, you know, so we're going to have to take this on a case-by-case basis. Now, if it's the same thing, if the sensors is constantly going off, then yes. I mean, you know, we definitely would write that. If it's something that they can't help, even though it's a false alarm, there's a lot of different things that can make the false alarm. If it's negligence, based on they're not taking care of it, then, then yes, we're going, we're going to write it.
And that's the ones that I, you know.
Right.
It's the other, but those are the ones that, I'll be darned, I'm sorry. I wouldn't wait till the fourth one to find them $250, when we've spent $1,300 the three previous times. We're in there at $3,900 bucks, and now the fourth time, they finally can get $250 bucks, and we've cost the taxpayers all this money. That's absurd, for something that's negligent on their part. Absolutely absurd.
Again, it's, you know, we thought just three is what's been in the ordinance. Fourth, they say, hey, look, we're not kidding. And on the fifth, you know, it's, then, then you're going to have some serious dollars. So again, it's a step up. If you want to do something else, we.
And it's $1,000 per occurrence.
Per occurrence, after that, that's right.
For the fifth one. Now, when we, when we go into a situation that is a false alarm, it's a sensor issue or whatever, is that something that our fire marshal can go in and?
Fire inspector goes to everyone. So if we get back, if we have a, a false alarm last night to any local business or whatever, then we let the fire inspector know. He goes out and sees what the problem is, talks to them about it, if they have any issues, what's going on. A lot of times, that, you know, will lead into other, other issues is the reason why, you know, they're having a false alarm. So it helps fix a lot of other things. But yes, every false alarm is met by the fire inspector.
Yeah, all right. So the fire inspector, if there's faulty equipment and the health of the, it's a business, for instance, he could actually shut them down, is that?
Could he shut them down? No. No.
I didn't know, what I was trying to say is, is I didn't know what you.
It has to meet a lot more criteria than just that for us to be able to shut a business down.
Well, I think we want to shut them down, but.
No, I know, but it just, it's a big cross, it's not, it's not that easy.
Right, right.
Does that make sense? It's not that easy to shut one down.
Yeah. I mean, I, you get three opportunities, you're going to get, the fire inspector's going to come to you, replace the business three different times?
We, we went to, we went to a business this morning that's had several false alarms in the past, and this morning they had actual fire. So we have to treat every one of them as real.
That's right.
And that's just the way it is. So we got to go, we got to be prepared for whatever we may see or, or happen to have, and, and that's, that's what happened this morning. But the thing is, is these, these businesses, and as Mr. Jack said, they're costing not only the tax, they're costing everybody money. So we got to have some way to, to get their attention and say, hey, this is serious. We need, we need to fix it.
Serious says the second time you get hit with $1,000, that's serious. They'll, they'll step up and think, okay, that's serious. They ain't going to worry about $250 the fourth time in. I mean, they might go and not.
I, I don't disagree, I sure don't.
So 250 for strike two, 1,000 for strike three?
If it's the same offense, if it's for the exact same thing, $1,000, because it's cost the city, at this point, 2,600, because they had to go twice. So while we're not even covering 50% of the taxpayers' money because they wouldn't take care of an issue that they knew they had. Those are the ones I'm talking about, not somebody pulling an alarm.
First, first, third, second. 250, second, 250, third, 1,000.
Yeah, if it's the same issue, second time, 1,000 bucks. Third time, 2,000 bucks. Fourth time, 3,000 bucks. They'll fix it, so they will spend the money to fix it sooner or later. I don't, I don't want my constituents' tax money.
Mr. Jack, but we need to also have to give them a little bit of leeway to, to get it repaired, so.
Well, I'm not saying the second, if it happens two days in a row.
Yeah.
But if it happens again in the month, a month later, and.
Well, we're going to have to be specific, we're going to have to be specific how we do that in this ordinance, right, Rob?
Yeah, I'm, I'm afraid if you're getting beyond $1,000, then you're getting beyond a misdemeanor offense.
We'll cap it at $1,000, that'll get their attention, but 250 doesn't do that.
And that's fine, so maybe what we could do, when do you, you want the $1,000 on the second ti, the second false alarm?
I think that's too much. I just, I'm sorry.
How about the third?
No, I, I think that's too much. I think we have an administrator who has the authority to oversee and to work with our businesses, and sometimes things happen that are beyond your control. And so I think it's at, at the administrator's discretion, and I thoroughly trust our fire chief to be that administrator and use that discretion. I think what, what has been proposed is reasonable. If we continue to have problems, we can always amend it later. But I think to, to, right out of the bat, just make this big change, and this is, this is this, you know, extremely high fee. I understand what you're saying, I don't disagree that, you know, with what you're saying as far as we need to be very cognizant of, of our budgets and taxpayer money and that kind of thing. But I think that this is a reasonable proposal to get started with, and I think it's really going to help with the situation. As a business owner, I'm, I would be, I would be very, and as a business owner who has had issues with an alarm where the fire departments had to come out and, and did everything I could to try to correct, I just think to, to come right back and say, well, then your next offense is $1,000. Sometimes you are at the mercy of the alarm company. Sometimes you're at the mercy of other things that are, you're not doing it intentionally, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So I think that the proposed plan is a very reasonable plan. I think we can get too egregious and not too, too aggressive is what I meant to use, too aggressive with fines and fees that I don't think will be in the best interest. So that's just my opinion, my two cents, likewise.
I'm thinking more two fifty, five hundred, but.
Yeah. I mean, I have no problem with the thousand on the fourth offense. And that's at the discretion, I'm sorry, two fifty at the fourth offense, and then after that's the thousand. And again, that's at the discretion of the administrator, which is our fire chief.
If they can't fix it at four ti, I mean, four times for the same thing, are you kidding me?
Things, things do happen.
Well, again, this is, this is much better. We're, we're, we're zoned in on it now. And again, we'll, there's a pretty good tier that gives us to work with. I think it's all about our education.
Right.
Same thing with the PD, we're, it's, we have an ordinance on the books. We have not really followed the ordinance because the ordinance doesn't stick. I think this gives us some teeth. The two chiefs are going to make this work. We establish a more, better relationship with the alarm companies. We educate, we do, we do public announcements on it. So I think they'll get the.
It's a bad, it's something.
They'll get the work.
We can, we can, if we implement what's being proposed, we can come back in ninety or a hundred and twenty days, two hundred and eighty days, and we value whether or not we did it, make a difference, did it not? If it didn't, then, you know, then maybe we do need to, to.
We've got an information sheet also we're going to send out to all the businesses of what they need to do, how they need to do it, to make sure that it's up and running and everything's going good. It's listed step by step. That's for the ones that who don't know and has no idea. And some people don't. Some people have no idea of what's going on or how that stuff, so we're going.
And I don't think people think about the fact that if this happens, that it's, there's a cost associated with it.
All right.
I don't think they realize that. So I think, I, I would much rather go the route of education, helping people understand this is why this is important. Not only is it a cost to us as the organization, but there can be, like you were talking about the other day, in a, you know, in a bad weather situation where the false alarm is going off, now you're endangering our employees to have to get in that, you know, gazillion pound fire truck and go blast it over here to this business, that there's really not a problem. So, but you're going to do that because there could really be. So I think education is going to be a big part of that.
Did we say that the businesses are going to get a copy of the new, like, offenses, you know, that they'll have? Like the times they'll have for a alarm to go off? When they get notified, this is what about, this is about the.
Oh, yeah. Ever, 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 ever fire alarm that goes off, then the fire inspector is going to go talk to them. So they'll, they'll know how many and what's going on and the reason for it. Because a lot of people hasn't never had to deal with it, you know. Some, some never have false alarms. Some do. Some have more than others, of course. That's, that's what we're trying to do, is the same ones over and over and over again, getting them to help fix that problem.
Okay. Do you, is it the will of the council to be, to be accepting of what's been proposed? Or are y'all asking for these figures to be amended or changed for consideration?
By the fourth time, they get a two hundred and fifty dollar fine. They go through the town after that. So they get four times.
And my hope is that we never find anyone.
Right.
That, that's what this is about. This is not about finding people. This is about getting them to fix their equipment so we don't have to find anyone.
Well, can we take four to three? What, how, how do we get to like the fourth false alarm to be the final fine, like, okay, it's four times? Or I guess it's the three, really?
Yeah, you hear three, and then on the fourth one, you get the two hundred and fifty dollar fine, and then on the fifth one, it's a thousand.
Okay, all right.
Let me ask you this, do we track, did you track this?
Oh, yeah.
So could you maybe, Pete, for, get some information to see how many we had of these false alarm type deals per location? Do you have it broken down like that?
Yeah.
And then let us see how often this happens, or how many businesses have, you know, like one business had twenty false alarms, you know.
We haven't had that much.
Where the excess is coming from. I don't think every business is, is in violation of this by any means.
No.
And I'm sure this is a small.
But I want us to be able to work with our businesses too. I want, you know, I mean, they've already been hit hard enough with everything that we're all dealing with in the world right now. So I think it's, you know, to be able to, with some education, with working with them, with working with the alarm companies, which are really in control of everything, not the business. And, you know, and helping them to understand this is why we do have to implement this is because there is a cost associated with every time that fire truck or that false alarm goes out. I'd rather see us go about it that way than just, you know.
I think you were here because the chief gave some stats last time.
Yeah, you gave us some.
Yeah, I did.
We went through all of it.
Well, I mean, I was thinking, I'm looking more like, is it, is it the restaurant industry that's got?
It's, it's broad-based. I mean, we run a hundred and sixty-six, and, you know, eighty-two of them or eighty-four of them were, were false. Eighty-four of them were false alarms. The problem is, is, you know, and we can't pick and choose what we're going to pick on. But, you know, during the night, during our sleep time, when we're not getting paid, you know, if we get up, we get paid minute for minute. You get up from three to five, it's automatic eight hours. So, you know, you're looking at seventeen hundred dollars to, for a fifteen-minute false alarm. That's what we're trying to do. You know, it took fifteen thousand dollars out of our overtime budget last year. So it's, it's about dollars and cents, and it's about, you know, getting people to do the right thing. They're taxpayers, so it's their money.
All right, any other discussion? If you've got time, if there's anything that comes up, you know, after this, if you want to get with Chief, get more detailed.
Absolutely.
And we'll be talking about it at our regular meetings. So if you think of any other concerns or suggestions or whatever, we certainly have time to have that conversation before we go on this. Okay, any other questions with Chief? Thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
All right, Jessica, you are next to discuss proposed amendments.
I think Ross.
Okay. All right, Rob, you have it.
Really, last year, the legislature passed House Bill eight seventy-nine. And basically, you know, that bill has numerous revisions to the state alcohol statutes. The one that we're addressing tonight is the home delivery of alcohol. And basically, what the state law says is that if you are a packaged goods retailer, you can deliver alcohol to individuals. And, and basically, that person, if I want to have alcohol live in my house, I establish an account with that, that retail package dealer. And then, you know, I pay for it before it leaves. And then they have all these requirements about how it's going to be delivered and who can deliver it. They have to go through training. So anyway, long story short, unless the city council wants to prohibit home delivery of alcohol, then state law covers, covers it. We don't have to do anything. Except there is one anomaly, you know, in the, the law. And when you read through the GMA information they sent to us, if you want to allow a restaurant who has an on-premise consumption license to deliver alcohol, then we should pass an ordinance allowing them to do that without requiring them to get an additional license other than the on-premise consumption license. So this ordinance that you have before you, there's two of them. One says we're going to not allow it. The other one says it's okay for restaurants, you know, to deliver it. It's all right for restaurants to deliver it under their current on-premise consumption license. So there's one ordinance says we're not going to allow it in the city of Tifton. The other one says, because state law says you can do it, we're just connecting those dots to allow a restaurant on-premise, you know, consumption license to deliver it. So that's, that's it in a nutshell.
All right. Questions, comments? So y'all, we'll need to give us direction on what you want to write back.
Or we'd have to put both of them on there.
So the two options.
If y'all want to narrow it down.
The first option would follow the state law, and we have, we have an example, just follow state law. Or if you don't want to follow state law, then we need to create some other language. So those are the two options.
I, you know, I personally, I mean, I just want to vote that I would, I would be in favor of following state law. I think anything that we can do to assist our businesses.
Yeah, well, I'd follow state law, but also do that one that if we have to add the ordinance that says you can deliver. And add that one is what I'd do.
Y'all, you have time. Without voting. Johnny, do you have any questions? You go ahead.
Well, okay. One question.
Yes.
The person that ordered the alcohol, I mean, you, you, you need to be twenty-one.
That order, you said, the person that orders it?
So if we decide to do this, is there a way we, we, it had, what I'm trying to say is to make sure.
I think they have to do the same thing whoever gets it at the house. It's the same as if they walked in to the store.
Okay.
They had to show an ID there, they got to show an ID at the house, and you do the same kind of thing. Somebody, if you want to do an undercover sting, you go to somebody's house and you try to deliver, and they don't show an ID that's twenty-one, guess what?
And, and that's all the state law. It's very rigorous, Johnny, as far as, you know, identifying, you know, first of all, who's going to deliver it? And then when you do deliver it, you know, identify that you're delivering to the, to the person that ordered it. They're over twenty-one, so that's all in the state law.
Okay, that's good.
They're on the hook.
Yeah, why won't we let the person under twenty-one deliver?
Well, the other thing is, they actually have, the, the people that deliver it have to do the state mandated, mandated training to deliver.
Okay, there we go. I'm good.
We're just following the spec.
All right.
Okay, are any of the questions? Okay, next one. All right, the next item on our agenda, relate back to the public hearings that we had at the beginning of our meeting. Are there any questions concerning those ordinances that will be on the rezoning and then the land development plan? Y'all good on that? All right, we are at the point of our agenda now for our city manager report. So Pete, I'll run it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I sent you something Friday, just an example, but Kirsten is doing a lot of updates and doing a lot of interactive videos on the government channel. So that's been our goal together, and she's done a great job. The chief chat is the newest. Hopefully, you've seen that. But both chiefs, I think our chief hasn't done his yet.
Well, that'd be a great opportunity for him to talk about false alarms.
False alarms, yeah. We, we already talked about, yeah. So, but great, great work, and Kirsten's using a lot of more interactive, so we could, we could.
Are they being, and where are they being posted? Or where are they, where are they running?
We're going to do it on social media, but mostly the government channel.
Because, I mean, I personally don't get the government channel, so I don't know how many more people don't get the government channel. So we need to be sure that, that we do have it other.
It'll all be, yeah, social media based as well. But I'll be, I'll send, I'll really send those to you as there, she has a couple more that she's doing, just to say. I want to share with something how scary it is today that Abby, Abby and actually Jeff dealt with something last week. And we had actually a, we, we thought we saw it all, but festival fraud. And what someone came up with, sent through ESG, Jeff actually saw it, someone wanting to, about the park. And this was the same time that the Rhythm and Ribs Festival was, was supposed to be happening. And actually, it, it appeared as if the park was being used by a group. Abby contacted them, and they called it a spring fling. And again, some, all these vendors are going to be there. And it, it looked legit, and people, vendors actually signed up and some actually gave money. Yeah, so Abby, Abby caught it, obviously did, did what she needed to do. But we had, we had a festival fraud trying, trying to, you know, lure people into giving money to have, they thought that, it looked as if they were having a festival in our community. And I just, I tell you, it's, it's pitiful where we are, but goes to show you how vigilant we have to be. And hats off to Jonathan and Stephen because, man, they're on top of, they're on top of a lot of our stuff that we go through and from tablets, excuse me, to computers. We have all the latest and greatest, but whoever would have thought that someone was going to try to sneak in the back door and have a fake festival? So thanks to Abby for doing that, and I wanted to share that within how real it really is today. Thirdly, on top of, Ricky and I are on top of the sanitation. We're working that very, very diligently each and every day, working with Ryland very closely, working out all the bugs. We're a month into it. I think we have a pretty good handle on it. But it's time for them to start coming forward and maybe have a update at the next meeting to let you know where we're, where we are, what they're doing, et cetera. And I wanted to share that with you, but we're committed to it. And we're, we're committed and we'll work through some of those continuing issues that we have. But if any, if, keep sending the complaints and, and if there's anything else that you need to share.
What I would like to do, if Jeff and Wes are willing. I'd really like for the two of you to get with Pete. We've come a long way, but we've still got a long way to go on that contract to make sure that our citizens and our businesses are receiving the best possible service that, that this company can give. So I know that, you know, anytime you start, anytime there's a change, it's, you know, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to make those adjustments, and there's that learning curve and everything. But if the two of you would be willing to meet with Pete, I'd really like for y'all to do so so that we can make sure that, that everything is covered and that there's no, nothing's fallen through the cracks. There's, you know, we're, we're really covering all the bases. So, and then you can get, then three of y'all can get with them to, to address any concerns or issues. I'd like for them to maybe come to the council meetings, like you were saying, just to, you know, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, to make sure that our citizens are receiving the service that they deserve, so.
No, I, I would, I mean, and we need to bring out, you know, I don't like to hammer anybody in, in the public. But we can hammer them, we can hammer them before that, because I'm getting hammered every single day. In my district, for whatever reason, maybe Johnny or, but, but I, oh, Lord, it started again this afternoon. But, you know, so we, there's some things, there's some things that they need to do. But I was glad to see one under the point, they started putting these cards or something that says, keep your can, can't five feet apart. And it is funny to read the comments, they didn't know, people didn't understand what that meant, but.
Well, just like with this, just like with the, we're talking about with the false alarms, it's a different process. And so the public's having to learn a different process. So we just want to make sure that we're providing the information, that they're providing outstanding service to be patient and, and work with our citizens as, as we get through this change.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful. We have a lot of the small details, and again, we're working through it. It's only been a month, so we're on top of it. I, I can assure you that. And number two is that if we let them know all the little ins and outs that we're experiencing and we could help them along, I think it'd be beneficial. So I would be glad to do that.
We've got to do some more education.
Yeah.
You know, we have the same issue, Johnny, you and I talked about this with, with Golden. They wonder why when they dump a can, stuff just flies everywhere. That's because they're not following the rule of it has to be in a bag. And it, and it's very clear in these, these guidelines, all trash must be in a bag. Well, the way Ryland does it, when it's up in the air and it's not in the bag, you know where it's going. And so I don't think people understand that it has to be in a bag. They just throw loose stuff in there and it's going to be all over the street. So that's not Ryland's fault, and the guy will be chasing, he'll be chasing today, chasing it all over fifteen blocks with twenty mile an hour wind. So we, we've got to do some of that, and people are going to push back on it. They're going to, but.
But I'd be glad to coordinate that, and I think it's time to do that. So, but the bottom line is we're committed, we're going to make it work, and we're going to do what we need to do.
Excellent.
Okay, then lastly, I gave each of you a copy of the 2020 Mayor and Council Retreat, the U goals and objectives for this past year, and wanted to share that with you. I did write and read what you've accomplished, what we're able to, to do this particular year. And, you know, the first page is progressive work, especially in the south of Tifton. Code enforcement, we've had some, you know, we had a lot of interruptions in this area. So it's, it's going to leave the next four or five months to work hard on, on that particular page. The solid waste and landfill, we have completed pretty much all of them. We have, again, we have to talk about the transfer station and where we are going forward with, with costs. Design standards was a biggie last year, and I think we, we really have made a lot of headway with that with regards to ordinances and where we are with our documentation. Boards and authorities, again, we've, we've made a lot of headway there. Same with, with, with community policing. And then miscellaneous, the things that keep coming up, branding efforts and economic development efforts. You know, and again, just applications, things that are going to enhance our, our community. But at, at the six-month-plus mark, I think you need to be commended. We've been pushing pretty hard. This is our third year of some heavy lifting, and we're not done yet. But I will say, I'll be starting to send some notes to you. Hopefully, we could, if you'd like to, plan another mini retreat where we could finish up and talk about this, but more importantly, next year, on some of your ideas and where you want to go next year. So if you're willing to do that, I'll start getting some, some dates together, and you tell me, and we'll plan it from there. you tell me and we'll plan it from there.
I think we need to, uh, what are your, what's our thoughts?
Just give throughout some dates and I'll take the script.
Good. I'll, I'll start working on it right away and, um, we'll go from there.
Okay.
But if there's any questions on, on this stuff, I'd be glad to go over that with you.
Okay. Perfect. Now just be thinking about goals, you know, um, as we go into twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two and where you want this community to be and your, your particular district. Um, go through some quick mayor and council comments and then we do need to go into executive session for legal and for personnel, uh, issues. So, um, does anybody wanna follow up here at first?
I'll go first.
Okay.
Mine, just a, a couple of, uh, safety items. One is to remind people where they see this, you have to be sixteen for these golf carts. It does drive me crazy when an adult's sitting there and letting his seven-year-old ride with nobody else and they ride by and wave and I'm just thinking, you've got to be getting it. But I don't say anything. And, and I did, surprise, surprise, huh, Wes? Are you over there saying it? You didn't say anything really?
He said something about it. That's what I'm saying. I'm not gonna say anything about it.
I didn't say anything directly to them, only cause my wife was standing there and she said, if you go out there and say something to them, I'm gonna kill you. Uh, but, um, I, you know, I, I did, and I, I'm on social media and I'm on these neighborhood pages and I hear lots of things about the garbage, which I, I like to hear, cause that's the only way to, to keep up. And one of them, comment was talking about how the fellas sit in the truck and doesn't get out. Well, and it, you know, Golden used to have people, guess what? I sleep better at night, cause those people aren't hanging off the back of that truck and we're not forcing people to hang off the back of a truck and slip and hit their head and get killed. And, and the idea that somebody think that's okay, just really just gets so high. That is the best thing about Ryland to me. And I said it before, is nobody's hanging off of that darn truck risking their life for what probably is minimum wage. I don't care if it's a hundred dollars an hour. It's not worth it if you get killed. So safety, you know, is a big thing and I, I applaud Ryland for that, at them operating that way.
Okay. Good deal. Who wants to go next? John?
Well, yeah. I think, uh, last week, last meeting, we, I was, I asked you about the Collin Street, Dudley Street area of, of, of South Tifton. That would, will be called Collin Quarters. And I want you to ask Jeff or who, whether, who, some, Pete, to, that's, we need to take a look at that area. It, it, it's becoming a, a garbage area. You know, it's a lot of dumping, a lot of houses. It, 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 we just need, if we need, we need to, if you would, counsel, just pay some attention to that area. Cause this was one of the first areas in the city of Tifton, Collin Quarters, if you call it. It was an area that all the people that lived there worked downtown.
Right.
And that's why they moved from the alley over to Collin Quarters so they could be closer to their work. And if you go through there now, it's just a little bit like nobody lives there.
Yeah.
We need to address this.
Okay.
You know? I try to know how, how we can or what we can do, but we need to just look at it, if you will, uh, in the next week or so. Just go look and see what, what we can do, cause there's something that has to be done. And I know we can do it, so.
Sure.
We just need to look at it, see what we can do.
Okay. All right. Pete, you got all that?
Yeah.
All right. Wes?
Uh, going back to that state alcohol ordinance thing, um, is there a, like, if I ordered some alcohol to be brought to my house, is there a limit to a month, the, a number of drinks that can, I can ask for someone to be delivered? I mean, you know, can I? No, no, I'm serious, because let's just say, for instance, you know?
I know you're serious, but it's just, it just conjures up some thoughts. I'm sorry.
You know, the, the underage drinking aspect that this presents by being able to be, have it delivered to the house and then those kids going out and doing something? Listen, we all been in high school before, we was all in college, we were all underage before and we, they, they were, you, you, you think you're the smartest person on earth and you'll come up with the craziest schemes, you know? And what I'm just trying to say is, 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 is there some way that this doesn't get out of hand and we open Pandora's box by trying to help these businesses? But then also we, we open up, uh, we go down an alley with underage consumption of alcohol that is just impossible to find, you know, or, 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 or to eliminate, you know?
I did not see any limit on how much you could order and have delivered. Uh, but I did review the requirements as far as what the, what the package retailer has to do, what the individual who's receiving it has to do. And you really have to jump through a lot of hoops to make this happen. So, um, and, and remember, we're just talking about, uh, beer and wine sealed. So you're not ordering the margarita, you know, from somebody.
Right.
Uh, so I, again, I did not see any limit, you know, three cases of beer, whatever. But I, uh, but what I did, what I was impressed by is all the, um, protections that I think the state law put into the statute so that you don't run in, uh, you try to keep from running into the problem that you're talking about.
All right. I mean, is there a way that we can put a limit, like the city of Tifton could put a limit on, like, I would, I mean, my thing is, is, you know, one twelve pack or whatever of beer per person. You have twenty-one years of age. So if you had the graduation party and you had all the aunts and uncles that were of age and they wanna celebrate or whatever, and, you know, they've probably been doing a pre, some pre-celebration beforehand and didn't wanna get out and they wanted to order, that's fine if we go down that route, but it'd be limited to X amount, you know, of, um, can't, can't we do that? Or can you look at that?
I will look at that. I mean, because it, I, I think that the state law does allow municipalities to restrict it.
Yeah.
So that may open the door for what you're talking about, a limitation. But I need to look at that a little bit closer to see. I mean, I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah.
Well, what, what's the difference of sending somebody to the Walmart and they buy a six, you know, twenty-four pack? I, I guess, I don't, you know, I don't.
Somebody, I mean.
I don't know the difference there. Maybe there is and I'm, I'm missing it, but if you, if you still have to be twenty-one, the person that's gonna receive it at the house can get in his car, which might be worse than having it delivered if he's been out, if he'd already been drinking and go to Walmart and get all he wants.
Yeah.
I, I don't know. I'm just.
I was just thinking, I'm like, you know, if you had that, let's just say, all right, you have that one, I mean, and let's just be honest, there's parents out there that, that will buy alcohol for their underage children, you know? I mean, it is. It's, it's the truth. It's the ugly truth. Uh, but, you know, uh, now you have, uh, other children, other people's children over at your house spending the night and having a good time off Friday night and the mom or dad orders, you know, two cases of beer to be brought over there to the house. So, you know, I mean, things like that can, that can, that can get out of hand, underage drinking and all that stuff. And I mean, the, and, and the person who's delivering it did everything right, you know? Uh, you know, I just, you know, I don't know. I just, you know, you gotta think about stuff like that sometimes. I mean, you know?
Well, let, I, I will take a look and see if that's an option, you know, as far as restricting the amount that can be delivered. And then let you all decide whether or not you wanna entertain that.
All right. Anything else, Wes?
No, that's it. That's all my only complaint for the day.
It sounds like a complaint. It's not like one. All right. MJ?
Uh, nothing. Glad to be here. Uh, thank you. Still working together, pushing along, uh, and, and on that house bill, is it just, you